I now call to order the Planning Commission meeting of March 13, 2019. Secretary Kezey, please call the roll.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Becker.
Here.
Chair Jane.
Here.
Commissioner Salem.
Here.
Commissioner Kezey present. And, yeah, I do, I do. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Kelly?
And Commissioner Kelly will be joining us slightly later?
Yes, he texted me, he's just running a few minutes late traffic, I guess.
So let's just wait. In the meantime.
Okay, so we'll wait to excuse him if he can't make it, but I suspect that he'll be here. Okay, so let's move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Remain standing for the Statement of Values.
Statement of Values. As we gather, we humbly seek blessings upon this meeting. May we act with strength, courage, and will to perform our obligations and duties to our people with justice to all. Let us seek wisdom so that we may act in the best interest of our people, our neighbors, and our country. All this we ask so we may serve our community with fairness and respect and putting their needs before all. Thank you.
You may be seated. Thank you. Okay, public hearings are conducted by the Chair in accordance with the following procedures. The Chair of the Commission directs all activity during the hearings. All comments shall be addressed to the Commission. Any item on this agenda may be continued to a subsequent hearing. Applicants will be allotted up to 10 minutes to present and justify proposals following the staff presentation of the item. Other speakers will be given up to two minutes. The applicant is allotted up to five minutes for rebuttal of comments. No additional comments will be accepted upon the close of public hearing, although the Commission reserves the right to direct questions to any speaker on any matter. Special procedures, time limits, may be applied to any items as prescribed by the Chair. Appeal of Commission actions must be filed in writing within seven calendar days. Copies of the current agenda and staff reports for each of the items on the agenda are available from the Planning Division office on the Friday afternoon preceding the meeting and available online. A copy of the agenda packet is located on the table near the entrance to the Council chambers. Let's at this time continue our roll call.
Commissioner Kelly.
Here.
Okay.
We have a quorum.
So we have quorum, of all the Commissioners are here. Okay. Are there any requests by applicants, the public, or the Commission for a continuance or exception for any of the items on tonight's agenda? Seeing none. Okay. So the Planning Commission currently has five members and two vacancies. With all five members present this evening, a simple majority will be required to approve any item on the agenda this evening. Now we move on to the consent calendar. The procedure for the consent calendar is as follows. Consent calendar items may be enacted, approved, or adopted by one motion unless requested to be removed by anyone for discussion or explanation. If any member of the Architectural Committee, staff, the applicant, or a member of the public wishes to comment on a consent calendar item or would like the item to be heard on the regular agenda, please notify Planning Staff or request this action at the Planning Commission meeting during the consent calendar review. Items listed on the consent calendar with associated file numbers constitute public hearing items. Secretary Kezey, will you please read the consent calendar for the record?
Item 1A, 19-256, Planning Commission meeting minutes of February 27, 2019.
I would like to pull this item for a clarification. And the simple clarification is that the item for the BMI Gym was continued to today, date certain, because there were questions and the applicant was not present. And that was not reflected that the applicant was not present at the time. So if we could just make that change, I'd be happy to.
So, yeah, we will make that edit and then that will just then forwarded to City Council, doesn't need to come back here.
That would be fine. So.
I make a motion to approve the minutes with that change.
Motion by Secretary Kezey and Commissioner Becker.
Chair Jane, I'd just like to point out that Commissioner Salem should abstain from this vote because he wasn't present.
Okay.
So I should make a statement that I did view the stream of the previous Planning Commission meeting, so I am aware of public comment and conversation around the open issues that were postponed until this meeting.
So is he still required to abstain?
Yes, just abstaining from the minutes, but he can participate in the decisions for the two items that were continued from the last meeting.
Okay, so, all right, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Are we going to do Granicus?
Abstaining Commissioners. Oh, we should vote on the, okay.
Did everyone cast their votes?
It hasn't popped up yet.
Are you joined into the meeting?
I did press join.
Are you on Granicus?
Yes.
Okay, right. Passes with one abstention from Commissioner Salem. Moving on to public hearings. Secretary Kezey, will you read item number two?
Okay, 19-208, public hearing is, item is a request to initiate rezoning of 908 Fremont Street. Recommendation is to adopt a resolution of intention to rezone the property from downtown commercial to single-family R16L zoning district.
We have staff presentation?
Yes, Rebecca Bustos will make this presentation.
Pardon?
Rebecca Bustos will be making this presentation.
Thank you Commissioners. So this item is simply a request for the Planning Commission to initiate a rezoning of the property. So the rezoning itself is not actually before you. This is the request for initiation that was submitted by the property owners of 908 Fremont Street. It didn't save properly, apologies, but the property is located at the corner of Fremont and Lafayette, and it is a single-family residence. It's currently zoned CD Downtown Commercial, and so they're requesting the Planning Commission initiate rezoning to R16L. Thank you.
Okay, are there any questions of staff? Okay, I, any, I, okay, Commissioner Becker.
Someone, I'm a little new to this, but what is R16O again?
L.
Six L? Is that residential?
Single-family residential.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so it's our standard 6,000 square foot, single-family residential lot district.
So I have a question. So this is currently zoned commercial, but there's been a home there for 50 years, and it's taken this long to try to set it right. So it's been sort of an illegal use. Is that right? Because it wasn't zoned for single, it's a non-conforming use or whatever?
It would be identified as legal non-conforming, meaning the use was established legally, but it's non-conforming to the current district.
Correct, correct, and.
Can I also state that the house was built prior to this creation of the zoning districts? So what happens is the city makes its best attempt upon establishing zoning districts in a code and then also a map. And so at some point, it was converted to downtown commercial, probably as part of the basically urban revitalization. And so it was anticipated that Lafayette may become a commercial corridor, but it, that transition to Franklin and some of the other streets that are perpendicular were commercial areas, but this one never did convert to a commercial area, so for us it makes sense, even though the general plan tried to carry over the same basically mixed uses that are allowed, but we anticipate it's going to remain residential, so that's why we're supporting this, the initiation of the rezoning.
Right, and so my question is, I mean, I certainly want to make it to be a legal residence, you know, zoned properly for residential use, but as we're trying to do a downtown development area, couldn't it be both? Couldn't it somehow be allowed to be residential or commercial at the owner's discretion? Is there a zoning option that we could apply that wouldn't lock it in to R16L?
So there's no current zoning districts that would allow either/or. And also, I did want to point out, the general plan designation of the property is very low-density residential, which is typically the designation in conjunction with the R16L zoning district, because it's those single-family lots that are lower density.
I understand, but, you know, across the street, there is commercial. Further up at the corner of El Camino Real and Lafayette, there's commercial. Further south of there, there's the whole Togos and Frozos and all of that, commercial. So it seems like if we're trying to revitalize the downtown, it seems like there should be an option to have both.
The one thing I could just mention also as background information is that these are recent property owners that purchased the house, and they, their intention is to file for a Mills Act agreement, was it's a preservation agreement between the city and the property owner and for basically investing in the property and maintaining it as a historic structure. They get a tax break on, in perpetuity, as long as they maintain the structure and maintain the contract. So, so in essence, we would have to basically remove a historic building in order to allow commercial, so that would be the net effect if there was a, basically a combination zoning district, if you were to displace this house. Now, the other available option is an HT zoning district, which is a historic combining district, and that allows both residential, basically allowed a variety of uses, so the house could be converted to a commercial use without basically its demolition. There's a possibility you could have both, but that would have to be contemplated in the zoning, basically the rezoning to the HT. But right now, the owners have not indicated they want to go that route.
Okay, it seems like HT is what I'm looking for. It allows the most flexibility for a downtown redevelopment. But when they enter into a Mills Act, and I have a Mills Act on my home, and so you're locked into basically a 10-year agreement to preserve the house in a historic fashion, but you can, at the end of the 10 years, you cannot renew the Mills Act, right? And then the house could be moved if you want to maintain a historic home, and a commercial property could be put, a commercial entity could be there, a restaurant or whatever you want. But it seems like on Lafayette, we're overly constraining this property to turn into a R16L.
The only other thing I can share is that since the general plan is low-density residential, that whole issue has been taken care of because it was adopted. So reconciling the zoning to reflect the current general plan is basically making it conforming. And we do have those new state legislation that says we're supposed to conform our zoning in general plan with the general plan prevailing. That's Assembly Bill 3194, so it's really a step in the right direction. I understand what you're saying is because of its location, but the applicants have the option to apply for an HT down the road. It's just that as a private property owner, it's their choice to apply to rezone consistent with the general plan.
Okay, that's all I had. Thank you. Commissioner Kezey.
A quick question. In the report, there was a mention of like, if you convert to a single-family zoning, you can add accessory unit, but then you also mentioned that the Mills Act can, so this is just maybe not, this is just a more general question, but does Mills Act agreement constrain any ability to build an accessory unit?
So the Mills Act contract is typically applicable to the main house, the historic structure, so it doesn't provide any constraints on their future ability to do an accessory unit. Thank you.
I'd just like to add, though, that under the, basically also the state law that allowed for the fast-tracking of accessory dwelling units, it does give some provision to further restrict an ADU in terms of its appearance and make, it can be possibly a discretionary approval. So we do look at them to make sure that they're consistent with the main house or have some, they follow the same guidelines we would to the main house, but in terms of, we still allow them on those properties, as Rebecca mentioned.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Becker?
Going back to what Chair Jane was talking about, it made me think about downtown San Jose. Across the street from San Jose State University is Levix. They took an old house, they converted it into a tiny Mexican restaurant, and there's a few other homes down there, I think Iguanas too, that are also converted into that as well. And at first, I was just going to say, yeah, I'm like, give it the rezoning, but then what you're, what Commissioner Chair Jane is saying is making a little more sense, because, I mean, what if 20, 30, 40 years down the road, they want to do, they want to redevelop this, or not redevelop it, but want to make something out of a historic home? Kind of like what San Jose is doing with a lot of businesses in that region by the university. So I'm wondering, will we have to amend this or rezone it?
Well, I think first, what I'm hearing is we'd have to update the general plan, because zoning now has to conform to the general plan.
Okay.
And so the first step, and that, and that would probably be part of the downtown revitalization plan, is to rezone the downtown. That's what I'm hearing. So I think what I'm hearing is we don't have an option, so.
We don't, okay.
And the property owners could always submit for an HT zoning district later on, and that would allow them to propose a variety of uses as an option, and it would not affect their Mills Act agreement.
Okay, so I think we're moving on to the applicant. Is the applicant here? No, okay. Public, does any member of the public like to speak on this item? Seeing none, do we have a motion to close?
Motion to close public hearing.
A second? Okay, made by Commissioner Kezey, seconded by Kelly. And so now, do we have a motion?
The vote?
We need a motion.
Give her time to do the grand.
First she'll have to vote on closing the public.
Yes.
We did, oh, yeah, we have to.
You made the motion, but you didn't vote.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So all in favor of closing public hearing? Okay, passes unanimously.
Okay, I make a motion to recommend adopting a resolution of intention to rezone the property at 908 Fremont Street from the downtown commercial zoning district to the single-family R16L zoning district.
Second that? Okay, made by Commissioner Kezey, seconded by Kelly. Passes unanimously. Okay.
Thank you.
Item number three.
19-286, action on a conditional use permit for BMI Fitness to allow a gym at 1678 Coleman Avenue continues from February 27, 2019 Planning Commission meeting. Recommendation is to adopt a resolution to approve a use permit to allow a gym located at 1678 Coleman Avenue subject to conditions of approval.
There, are we going through a whole staff presentation again, or we saw this already?
I just wanted to give a brief update.
Sure.
That might be helpful. So based on some of the questions that were brought up at Planning Commission two weeks ago on the 27th, I did communicate with the business owner, and so they are comfortable with putting a cap on the daytime fitness classes, so the ones that are open to the public. So per the conditions of approval that you had in your packet this evening, we've initiated a cap of 12 based on the 16 parking spaces. And then in the evening, she did get, or the business owner did get approval from the landlord to have full use of the parking lot after hours, because like we discussed last time, the rest of the uses are industrial, so it wouldn't be in operation after hours. So that is part of the conditions of approval in your packet.
Okay, is there? Okay, I don't see any speakers. Is the applicant here? Yes, come forward, please. You have 10 minutes.
We work on trying to make it a quality place for our clients to attend. The classes are just a supplement, and as I had sent to Rebecca, I gave her three months of report showing what the usage has been, how the attendance. And, I mean, the average attendance is four people for a class, so it's not a heavily-used facility as far as the classes are concerned. I also want to apologize to all of you for not attending last time. I misunderstood that we should have had a representative here, so I apologize for that.
Okay. Do we have any member of the public that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none.
Motion, second.
Okay, motion to close public hearing by Commissioner Kelly, seconded by Kezey. Okay, passes unanimously. Can you, oh, sorry.
Oh.
Close public hearing, passes unanimously, yes. So now we need a motion.
I make a motion to.
On the item, I have a, I have a question first. What, where was the, okay, so that's condition C5 now. So it says limited to 12 attendees between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM. Okay, so I see that as condition number five now.
Okay, I make a motion to adopt the resolution to approve a use permit to allow a gym located at 1678 Coleman Avenue subject to conditions of approval, which now includes the, the number of clients during the daytime.
Can I ask a couple of questions before we jump ahead? Is there designated parking, any marked parking for this, this business within the group of businesses?
Yes.
So do you have a number of how many are officially marked?
I want to say there's six to eight. I don't know exactly the numbers.
So it's smaller than your maximum?
Yes.
Okay, that's all.
Okay, so we had a motion by Commissioner. Okay, so we had a motion by Commissioner Casey, seconded by Kelly, right? Did you?
No, I was gonna second, but it's already been.
I think it was Kelly seconded it, right? So please register your vote. Hey, that passes unanimously.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, item number four.
19-290. Variance from the parking requirement for the single-family residence at 648 Robin Drive continues from February 27, 2019 Planning Commission meeting. Recommendation is, hmm, adopt a resolution denying the variance to allow an 891 square feet rear addition resulting in a four-bedroom and three-bathroom one-story single-family residence with an existing 292 square feet one-car garage to remain.
Okay. Ms. Uggerson.
Yeah, so I can give a brief overview if you like, or I can?
I think, well, Commissioner Salem has seen the video for this, right? So just an update will be fine, yeah.
Okay, so. As we see this, this is the home 648 Robin Drive. The request was for a variance from the parking requirement in the R1-6L zone. The project was here at the Planning Commission last time, and they were asked to bring the letters of support. They have provided six letters of support. However, as the staff had mentioned at the last hearing, that an approval would still require making, making findings for the variances, for the variance requested. I have included a slide here with the findings section in the zoning code for your reference. So the staff recommendation is still that we are not able to make the findings to support the variance.
Okay. Now, there were a number of modifications that you had proposed, and I believe you said that the applicant didn't want to do those. Is that correct? Like expanding the garage out and so on, right?
Yes, so we had said that to the right, there is eight foot, seven inches of the side yard available, which exceeds the required setback, side setback of five feet, and that can be utilized to expand the garage. We can also provide a required typical width of the garage is 20 feet internal clear, but we can provide a modification for the width to be 17 feet. So we did have that, you know, we thought the addition was substantial, almost doubling up the living space, so there could be alternative designs that can be utilized here.
Okay. Don't see any one else. If the property owner wanted to put an ADU on this lot, right? There would be no, it could be 800 square feet, but there would be no requirement for a parking, is that correct?
The lot is 5,880 square feet.
Then the limit is, I think, 600, is it 640? If it's under 5,000, you can't, there's a limit on the size, so it's not 800 square.
So they can attach up to 50% of the living space that is on the property. The size of the ADU will be limited to 50% of the, if they were to do an attached ADU, and doesn't look like they will be able to do, I mean, the attached ADU will have to be, can be a maximum of 50% of the living space of the existing house. And then a detached ADU can be up to 1,200 square feet, given that they meet the other requirements of the R1-6L as such as the maximum lot coverage and other setback requirements.
Okay. So I guess we're kind of stuck in this area where they could do an ADU, it wouldn't be as big, but it wouldn't require to add any parking for that.
Right, in fact, they can convert the garage and not provide any parking, but, but the expansion to the house itself requires the parking, so it's kind of a dilemma. They could build the parking, in this case, it would be kind of a simultaneous application. They could build the garage for the expansion, but then they have to, they can convert it to an ADU immediately and not provide any parking.
Correct, correct. That is the, that is the dilemma that we have here. Okay, so Commissioner Salem.
Yeah, I'm seeing, just looking at Google Maps, the property adjacent is substantially larger and has a single-car garage still. So it seems inconsistent for us to block this development when that one exists as a precedent. Also, the property to the other side has a detached rear garage, apparently. Had converted their front garage completely. So I just think it's, I think it's almost nitpicky of us to deny this for that reason only.
Okay. Staff, would you like to respond to that?
So the property on the left, there is an addition on the property that predate our code. And also, we don't have any record of garage being converted into a living space currently.
It has, it has a rear garage from what I can see, so that's not, I think that's a two-car garage even.
That might be an existing, yeah.
That one's okay, yeah. But it's really the one I was talking about was the property to the right, the cream-colored one. Still seems to have a single-car garage and a substantial addition.
Okay. So while staff is mulling that over, the problem that we have here is that there are very specific findings that we have to determine for us to be able to do this. And so we have to look at these findings, and we have to say, can we make all of these findings? And so that is our problem right now. So staff, do you have any comments to what Commissioner Salem had said?
Namisha, do you know the background of the house on the right-hand side?
I don't specifically know the background on the house on the right-hand side, but you know, there were additions that were granted in the past. Sometimes they predate our code, and that's all, but it does maintain the existing one-car garage.
Do you know the date of the building permit for, for that one?
Yeah, I don't know if it's 650 or 646, I can't.
Among the houses that have the variance? This is not one of them. It could have been that the addition was approved prior to the adoption of the zoning code, since we don't have any record of it other than, under this, under this list of houses on Robin. But just, there's a couple of things. One is that, just a reminder that the variances, they don't, the basis of finding, approving one is not on, you know, what's just, what else has occurred in the neighborhood, because they're supposed to be granted on an individual basis. But we do understand the commission looking at this in terms of a parity issue. And so there was, looked like there was indication of support prior to, I mean, the conclusion of this hearing from the last hearing. And the commission did ask the applicant to obtain letters of support or confirmation from the neighbors. And so we did include a draft resolution in the event that you want to approve it. Now whether or not you support the language that we inserted is something for you to determine. But we did prepare that in advance, hearing the feedback and trying to use those as a basis for approval if the commission is inclined to make that determination.
Okay, Commissioner Casey.
So I would like to hear what the, I mean, we're moving to the applicant's presentation, but I think, you know, what applicant has to say has a lot to do with whether we can make the findings or not, so I'm eager to hear what they have to say.
Okay, Commissioner Kelly.
Quick question for staff. We, we can add in like requirement like for like storage racks in the garage, correct? And obviously, we would want to have a requirement that the garage remain open, that they don't use it for storage. Then can we add another uncovered parking spot in front? You know, because it does look like they have enough width in the front to add, expand the driveway so there could be two cars rather than one in the front.
If there is enough basically of driveway width to accommodate the turn, otherwise you may not be able to get out, back out of the driveway if there's another vehicle parked there, so we, I don't know how wide the driveway is.
It looks like it's a one-car driveway from the photograph.
It's a 16-foot wide driveway currently.
16?
Yeah, the drawings provided by the applicant show them to be, show that to be 16-foot wide.
Because it looks like it's a walkway next to the driveway, so I guess I would say, if you're gonna still have a walkway, you're gonna have to expand the walkway from the way the photograph appears, because if you add another car, there would be no room. And the driveway, driveway does look wide enough, I guess, but I would say, should we just put a requirement in that they expand the walkway? Because if there are two cars there, then the walkway is probably not sufficient from the way the photograph appears.
Yeah, you might want to look at Google Maps again for that property, because it's got a concrete pad on the right-hand side, and the whole driveway is more than two-car widths wide.
So is that, is that sufficient the way it is right now for two cars? Because it looks like, it looks like it's six feet across, but then if you had a car in the driveway...
Can you, can you go to the photograph of the car that's parked in the driveway? The red car, there.
So if there was a car parked next to it, how many feet is basically from that red car to that concrete wall approximately? Because is that a car length? Because it looks like it would have to be a small car to fit in between, and you'd want to have enough room for somebody to back out of the garage and not, you know, worry about hitting the car parked alongside the driveway.
It looks like the total width is maybe about 18 feet wide? Based on the dimensions of the plan.
So basically, two small cars, but not a mid-sized car, would be able to go in and out without a problem.
Basically, it's about the size of an interior parking space if we were to do a modification, so, but it may need some additional room. Maybe the applicants can specify whether they would want to use up some of the yard space to pour additional concrete.
Just wanted to add that the existing curb cut is 16 feet, and so they do have some additional room. You know, so the driveway width is a little more than 16 feet, so it could be, yeah.
Yeah, it's not a single-car driveway, so it's larger to accommodate a two-car garage.
And it's an existing two-car driveway right now, correct?
Yes.
Standard width? Because it looks like...
It's not standard, but it's, at the time, it was a two-car, that was for two-car access.
That was for two-car access, okay. So I would, I would say I'm okay with it as long as they leave the garage clear and put in storage racks in the garage, so it is available to park a vehicle.
Okay, I'd like to move to the applicant at this point. Would the applicant like to come up and say what's new?
Thank you all for having us again, and thank you for, Namisha, for helping us through this process. You guys are absolutely right. We can fit two cars in our driveway currently. If you, you know, wanna, if you want to, we can work with you to expand it into the yard, we're amenable to that. I think we're actually already going to have to change the ramp up because, to conform with accessibility issues, so, you know, we're already gonna be making that change. I just wanted to, to give another example of a house that went through the various processes on Armanini, 723 Armanini, just last year, in August, it was approved for a 980-square-foot addition, you know, more than doubling the size of the house. And the layout is pretty much exactly as ours was, you know. If they wanted to do the, the larger garage, they would have to expand into the living room, just like we would have had, or we would have to. You know, the other point that you wanted to make was just to make sure there was enough parking, so that's why I went to all of our neighbors. And, you know, this is a low-density residential area. They, you know, confirmed and signed our statement of support to let you know that, you know, there is plenty of parking here, and they're supportive of our project, including keeping one-car garage. And we are completely fine with, you know, doing whatever we need to to make sure that stays as a functioning garage, you know, not converted to storage space. Please let us know if there's anything else we can do to help this process along.
I think when you started, did you say you were willing to expand the garage into the side yard?
Sorry, the driveway.
The driveway, okay.
The driveway into the yard.
Okay, okay. And I have a question. Right now, it seems like if you were to park into the driveway and you had a car parked to the side, you couldn't get out because there isn't enough room. If you were to move the garage door to the left, would that make it easier to have a car go in and out with a car parked to the, to the right side?
That would be difficult because there's a fireplace where you're seeing that. So if you were to move the garage door to the left, it would hit the fireplace. There's a fireplace inside.
Oh, I see.
Fireplace projects into the garage space.
Okay, now I see.
What you're seeing right now, if you can go back to that picture, the front picture again, what you're seeing is this red car parked, it's actually quite centered, but imagine it being slightly more to the left, and there would be ample space in the right to park another car. And like they already park two cars sometimes in that driveway, so there is enough.
Right, but if you were parking the car in the garage, it would be hard to get out. If you're parking them both outside, I could see that work, but, and, and then maybe that walkway might need to expand a little bit to the left.
I actually suspect that the biggest challenge is gonna be where the dip is in the sidewalk to get into the street, since currently I believe that's only a, like, single-car space rather than a double-car space. But again, to my husband's point, because of the changes we'll have to make in order to conform with accessibility standards, we'll have to be adjusting that anyway. So I do think that once that ramp is widened, it'll make it much easier for us to be able to maneuver two cars in that space.
See, and maybe someone can jog my memory, but I want to say that in addition to conform with the accessibility, we already have to put a little bit of concrete into the yard to make enough room to go around the driveway. So I think we're already going to be impinging upon the yard with some concrete.
And that is already required, but the... And that is already required by the Public Works Department, so they'll have to comply with the accessibility standard for the sidewalk and redoing the curb and driveway, all that part.
I see. Okay, Commissioner Kelly.
Okay. You know, I know you've gone through a lot of work and we spoke to your neighbors, but I would just like you to commit to making sure the garage is kept available for parking a vehicle, because too often, people do put things in the garage for storage, and if we're not requiring two cars, then it's very important that storage not be what the garage is used for, it's available for parking a vehicle.
I think that's a very reasonable request. We do actually already have existing sort of overhead racks where we have some storage. Our plans also include moving our laundry room to the interior of the house. Currently, the laundry is in the garage, and so moving the washer and dryer to inside of the house will fill up all of that space for, you know, shelves, storage, all of that stuff. And so, we're more than happy to commit to whatever fixes inside the garage we need to in order to make sure that we have enough storage for our things as well as our cars.
That is the ideal, because then we know that the time when a vehicle needs to be parked in there, when your kids are getting older and you have a third vehicle, you can park two, front to back, and then a third alongside the car in the driveway. So, I would ask, and I'll probably make it a condition of approval, that additional storage be added, which is less expensive than doing a two-car garage.
Okay. Commissioner Kezey.
So, when we were here last time, one of the conditions is that this addition without, you know, what you're asking for will not, is not supposed to adversely impact the neighborhood. And you said at the previous meeting that your neighbors voiced support for your project. So, one of the suggestions we made was to go back to the neighborhood and maybe try to get signatures from your neighbors that shows, demonstrate their support. So, has something like that been done?
Absolutely. We have a copy, actually, if you'd like to see.
Oh, yeah.
We were able to get signatures from our neighbors, our immediate neighbors, so on right and left and in the rear.
Yeah, I couldn't find that in the packet.
Oh, no worries. And then three additional neighbors on the opposite side of Robin Drive.
Did you get them too? Are these the ones right here?
Yes.
They were emailed to us, yeah.
Yeah, these are the same, these are the same ones then?
Yes.
So, we already got them. Commissioner Kezey.
Oh, this one. Thanks.
Thank you.
Of course. Missed that. Okay. So, you know, is it okay to like pop up the diagram that shows your lot and surrounding lot, and tell us which neighbor said, is supporting the, your, oh, it's in here too?
No, actually, that's something that San Charly just...
Could you pass that on to Commissioner Kezey?
Thank you. So, the ones in red are the people who are saying yes. So, so...
Everyone we spoke with.
Everyone except one home, majority, majority of your neighbors are saying yes.
We didn't receive any no's.
Okay.
Because we weren't able to get ahold of everybody.
Okay, well, I'm satisfied that your neighbors support this. Thank you very much. So, I think that meets one of the required findings to approve this, which is that the granting of such variance shall not, under the circumstances of the particular case, materially affect adversely the health, safety, peace, morals, comfort, blah, 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 in the neighborhood of the applicant's property.
Here are the, this is, you had prepared two, you had prepared two statements, right? Resolutions, right. This is, is this the one for...
No, these are just the standard findings.
These are the standard findings.
The resolution is in your packet.
Yeah, I see, I see that.
So, we have, we have the original one, which is still the staff's position for denial.
Correct.
But we included one based upon the discussion from the last, for approval from the last meeting.
So, there are two, there are two documents in here. One is for approval and one is for denial.
Yes, thank you.
So, we have to determine that there are unusual conditions applying to the land, which do not apply generally to the same district, that the granting of the variance is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of substantial property rights. The granting of the variance shall not, under the circumstances of the particular case, materially affect the health, safety, peace of the neighbors. And granting of the variance is in keeping with the purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance. So, if the commission can find all of those, then we can have a motion. Oh, sorry. Would any member of the public like to make a statement? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
They made my Commissioner Kezey, seconded by Kelly. Okay, motion to close public hearing passes unanimously, okay.
Okay, I make a motion to, let's see now, adopt the resolution, I need to write, open the right document. I make a motion to adopt the resolution approving a variance to the two-car covered parking addition to a single-family residence with an existing attached one-car garage located at 648 Robin Drive, Santa Clara, for the following reasons, because I think I'm making the following findings. Number one, that there are unusual conditions applying to the land or building, which do not apply generally in the same district. Well, I mean, because majority of homes in that neighborhood, we've granted this type of expansion without requiring an addition of another garage. And this homeowner just happens to have an extra eight feet on the side of the house, but I think to be fair and equitable, I think it's reasonable to approve this without requiring that second garage. And another finding is that the granting of the variance is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of the property rights of the property owner. And I find that, I find a strong propensity that this variant, this exception is required, in that the granting of such variance will not, well, I'm paraphrasing, affect the neighbors, and I think the applicants demonstrated that. And fourthly, that the granting of the variance is in keeping with the proposed and intent of the zoning ordinance. And in this neighborhood, I think it does.
I'll second that.
Okay, Ms. Bazali, are you satisfied with those findings?
I think the commission may make those findings and can properly approve the variance based on those findings, yes.
Thank you. Okay, so, a motion by Commissioner, Secretary Kezey, seconded by whom? Commissioner Becker. Any discussion?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Kelly.
I would just like to add an amendment, because in these situations, we have required property owners to add storage racks and that they keep their garage free at all times for parking, because too often, garages are used for storage and not for parking vehicles. So, I would like to see that we add a condition that it remain all times available for parking a vehicle, and we add a requirement for storage racks in the garage.
I agree to that amendment.
Okay.
I just ask, I wasn't sure if Commissioner Kezey was just referencing the findings basically as a discussion, but are you, or are you refer, or basically, are you making your own findings in lieu of the resolution that the staff provided?
I agree with the resolution in the document that's titled, "The Resolution Approving the Variance."
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so, with that condition added, it was just...
There'll be two conditions.
There'll be two, one is storage and one is parking? Okay, all right. So, and since that's a friendly amendment, so I think we can move to a vote, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Can I read the next sentence? Okay, reports of commission, board liaison, and committee.
The first announcement we have is just a reminder that the March 27th meeting will be canceled, so there's a conflict, conflict for the use of this room, so we will just be adjourning to the next regular meeting, which is April 10th.
Are there any reports from, on committee assignments? I believe we're still trying to figure out what's going on with architectural review, is that correct?
Yes, as of now, it's going to remain in its current form, but, yeah.
The city council provided input on May 5th at their meeting about this, I'm sorry, March 5th, at their meeting regarding the staff's recommendation on AC process change, which would change the current process from a committee process, which has potential due process conflicts, to a staff-led hearing process and is more similar to our neighboring jurisdictions' processes. So, the city council provided some feedback that was generally supportive of that process. The feedback we received was they are interested in seeing appeals, the city council, being able to receive appeals on single-family as well as multifamily and office projects. That was the main, really, the main feedback. So, what we're working right now is bringing this forward from, to make changes to Title 18, and bring this in front of the Planning Commission. We anticipate bringing this in front of the Planning Commission on May 8th, and that would then need to go to city council for approval as well. So, if you're interested, we provided a pretty in-depth staff report for the March 5th city council meeting, and that will be more or less, of course, inclusive of the city council feedback, but what we would be interested in bringing forward to you all on May 8th.
Okay, and I forgot on item number one, when will council decide on new commissioners?
I'm just going to pull up my calendar, that's coming up fairly soon. They have calendared, I believe, on April 1st, interviews and appointments to the Planning Commission.
Do you know what time that's going to be? Is that going to be before a council meeting or during a council meeting?
April 1st is a Monday, and it's, I have it on my calendar from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. We can provide you any updated information on that, though, if I'm misspeaking.
Can I add something quickly on that? It is a special meeting for the interviews only.
Okay, very good. All right, so Commissioner travel training reports. Commissioner Kezey.
I attended the hemp column last week. Very interesting. I can see that it's a, becoming a real business.
Okay, very good. Any other commissioners? Okay, a report from the Director of Community Development.
First item on there is budget, but we gave you a budget update at the last meeting, so we'll just be doing that monthly.
Okay, okay.
I am able to provide an update, because at the joint dinner with Planning Commission and City Council, the commission had requested an increased budget for, for your expenses, training, and conference travel. So, city staff, planning staff has put in a budget request, kind of commensurate with the amount that you, the commissioners had expressed interest in. That's still going through the city internal process for review, and our suggestion is really to also bring forward some recommended guidelines that the Planning Commission would utilize when you approve any of your own expenses. So, if the city would be increasing perhaps substantially the budget, I think there will be an interest to provide some guidance and, you know, an understanding of how the commission would be using this travel appropriately. So, some guidelines, given that the commission decides its own expenses, you know, for how each individual request would be submitted and approved.
Okay, very good.
I have, thank you, I have a question. So, another thing that was brought up at the, of the mayor with, mayor, the dinner with the mayor, was onboarding package, maybe? So, that the recommended set of trainings that a new commissioner receive, there are trainings like the Brown Act and conflict of interest laws, rules, that everyone needs to be, needs to know about. I think those are done pretty much on the ad hoc basis, so maybe we can formalize those really basic stuff that everybody needs to go through to make sure, you know, to ensure the integrity of our committee.
We can provide more information on what's currently provided with the new commissioners, and then we can see how to augment that. So, we can first provide you with the packet of what's provided to the commissioners, and we can go from there to see what additional resources we should make available to the planning commissioners.
Thank you.
Okay, upcoming agenda items.
I had a question too, but I guess the thing isn't shown.
No, okay.
Is there a proper approach to sending feedback to the city council on questions we would hope they could ask of the applicants? Things like a level of commitment would be helpful if they could state what they believe their commitment is to the commission. That would be a good measure of their candidacy to be appointed.
You're referring to the interviewees for the Planning Commission spot?
Yes, yes, questions for the interviewees by the council. Could, someone could at least include a question about their level of commitment and their dedication to being a part of this commission for the full, or as much as reasonable, term, so that, you know, we avoid start-stops like this.
If you want to send those to me, to the staff liaison, then we can forward those on to the city clerk and let the mayor's office know as well that those are coming.
Right, I didn't want to... Right, I didn't want to just blast it off to everybody on the city council.
Sure, we can compile those and get those ready and send to the city clerk's office.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Okay, upcoming agenda items.
So two notable items coming forward is May 8th, the AC process change, as well as on May 22nd, we'll be bringing forward changes to massage uses in the city. And that's, that's had some, some significant outreach to practitioners as well as feedback from the city council.
Okay.
Another question.
So are you going to review some of these updates or are these just for our own edification? Because I see that the North City Vision Plan is going to be heard at council on April 9th, and that Kylie is just in early stages, but there was a workshop on the 25th, and the Climate Action Plan, there was a stakeholder meeting, zoning code update. So could you, there was some, I don't know if you can comment on this, but there was something in the news about a lawsuit on Related. Is that holding up Related, or is there Related moving along as expected? Or what is the status of the Related City Place project?
Related to, not related, but to many of the items that you, you had mentioned. Does, do all the planning commissioners have a sheet similar to you, what you have?
Yeah, I handed it out to everybody.
So those, there is a lot going on, especially in the world of advanced planning. And so that, that it's a good synopsis, I don't know if Ms. Chiara wants to list some of these things out. I want to point out that we, as part of the zoning code update, we're really ramping that up, and there's a lot of study sessions that we're intending to take advantage of being joint study sessions with both the council and the planning commission between May through August, to kind of give you different, smaller bites of the larger apple, so that we'll be able to bring the ordinance forward for your consideration and all its changes in the fall timeline. So you'll be seeing us schedule and work with you all on your schedules for, really, we're anticipating three joint study sessions over, you know, a period of three to four months.
And now the Related project, how, when are the, when do you anticipate any groundbreaking there?
I don't have a projected groundbreaking date. There is considerable work going on with Public Works. I don't have an update on any sort of pending lawsuit. I don't know if the attorney's office does.
Okay, it was just in the press, so I didn't know. If it was holding it up, because it, there was a lot of holdup before when San Jose sued Santa Clara, so I didn't know. Okay, all right, let's see. Okay, city council actions.
No, we're still, still, I have still another question.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Commissioner Solon.
Can we get maybe on the next meeting, an update on the progress on the e-scooter, e-bike moratorium? Because, mostly because I'm starting to see them appearing in the city, and one almost ran into the side of me on the way here today. So I know they're still out there, I just was wondering also if there's a, a statement of how they're going to do enforcement on that moratorium.
Certainly, we can bring that information back to you.
I just wanted to emphasize, and you read that off very quickly, Chair Jane. So we're tracking to bring forward to city council information and hoping for direction from the council on the City North area, which includes quite a lot of proposed development with our specific plans with Patrick Henry, Freedom Circle, Kylie, and then other areas that, you know, have anticipated growth or changes. So areas of information that we're seeking are related to density, height, community benefits, open space, these things so that we can create reasonable expectations as we move through review and specific plan process, as well as review process of, you know, these projects. So that is tracking to make its way to city council on April 9th, but sometimes that gets stalled a little bit through the review process, so we'll keep you updated on that. But, but that might actually occur prior to our next meeting on April 10th, so you should, you should watch out for city council agendas.
Okay. So on this Tasman East, you have listed a bunch of projects here. Are these each individually, when you say architectural review, are these coming to ARC?
Yes, they're all.
So all of these projects are coming to ARC?
They would be consistent with the plan, and so since that zoning district was created, then they would just conform to the plan and they could be approved through that process.
Okay, but they will be coming individually?
Correct.
Individually, yes.
So the AC actually, just recently in the last meeting, approved the first Tasman East project. It's a Summer Hill multifamily residential project. So each of these individual projects are going through the review process.
Okay.
Will be making their way.
Very good. All right, anything happen at the last council meeting that we need to know about?
As Brina mentioned, the AC, the AC process was considered and. There was also, this is just related to basically the Lawrence Station area plan, is that there was a purchase agreement with Summer Hill for a gray separation along Lawrence Expressway and a budget amendment for that process. And then there was an intention to establish a community facilities district as well at Lawrence Station for public, public services. Other than that, and she did, she did cover the, the AC process changes, so those were the items of the last council meeting.
Okay, all right, well.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Adjourned. Thank you very much. Pick two.